All right, we're going to go ahead and get started on today, which is January 22, 2024. And this is the City of Iowa City Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Conversation that we're going to be having. So I'm going to just jump right in there and turn it over to our city manager, Jeff Ruin.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council, and welcome on this Monday morning. We have a long day ahead of us, but I'm anxious to talk through the fiscal year 25 budget proposal with you. I usually will just offer a few remarks on the overall day before we jump into the presentation here. It is a long day. You're going to absorb a lot of information, and you're probably not going to be able to solve all the issues that you may see in the budget. I generally urge you to ask a lot of questions, but we may have to flag and park some topics for a future work session, depending on how deep you want to go. We'll be prepared to answer as many questions as we can. If we can't answer anything, we'll circle back to you with a memo in your IP or in some other fashion to get you the information that you need. So the way today will work is Redman and I are going to start with a presentation. It will be about an hour to an hour and a half. This is your executive summary of the budget. And then we'll take a short break, and you'll have a steady stream of your department directors come up and talk to you about their budgets and their operations. I encourage you to ask questions of them. And again, we'll just kind of flag anything that needs further discussion, or if you need more information, we'll follow up in the next few days. Sound okay? All right, off and running, let's go. Okay, so the budget review schedule is in front of you. You do have a copy of these slides in front of you if you want to take notes, too. We can make them available electronically as well. We started on September 5 with a budget work session on priorities. Those helped inform staff's proposal, and we're here in that second gray box on January 22 talking about the operating budget review. In two days, we'll move over to the capital side of things, all your major expenditures on infrastructure, parks, trails, roads, utilities, that sort of thing. And then we really get to the next two lines of this review schedule, which is where certain decisions need to be made. We really would like to finalize the CIP. I know it's a quick turnaround, but by your February 6 meeting. So if we identify any things this Wednesday, we'd like to try to get those worked out at your next council meeting, which is February 6. That allows us to begin preparations for issuing the bonds and stay on schedule there. We have to establish our max levy rate for a new notice that's required as part of last year's tax reform. We have to get to the county by March 5, our max rate. The county has to take the max rate from all the taxing jurisdictions, put them into one mailing, and mail those out to all residents so they understand what those rates are. On March 19, we'll set the hearing for that levy, and on April 2, we'll have that levy hearing. And we'll also set the hearings for the adoption of the budget and any associated ordinance changes that come with utility rates and things of that nature. Your public adoption or voting on the budget adoption will occur on April 16 with the final public hearing. So that is your timeline, really working to April 16. Understand that once you set a maximum in some of these steps, so when we're setting the maximum tax rate, for example, you can always go back. You can always spend less, but at some point, you won't be able to increase that levy anymore, if that makes sense. So a few checkpoints along the way. I won't go through this, but I wanted to have it for you. The budget document is a rather large document. It takes a long time to get through. This is just some sections that I think are particularly important for elected officials. So if you are prioritizing time, you may want to revisit the slide and look through those. A quick overview on government accounting. This slide shows all of our budgetary and non-budgetary funds. We are going to, I'll walk you through each one. At the top there, we'll kind of work our way from left to right across. The general fund is where most of the budget decisions will take place. That's where most of your operations, where there's some discretion, would take place. So your police, your fire, your parks, your general government, your finance, those types of operations live within the general fund. Your special revenue funds are revenues that we receive that have strings attached, in other words, restrictions on how you can spend those dollars. So for example, the road use tax is three down. We receive that road use tax from the state, and that has to go towards maintaining our street network. We can't use road use tax to build a new park. So think of those funds as just restricted in how you spend those dollars. The debt service are funds that we bring in to pay off the debt. So we borrow for capital projects. We then levy a property tax, and that pays those debt service. Our enterprise funds are funds that we run like a business. So the money that we take in support those operations. And you can see a lot of the utilities in there, water, wastewater. The rates that we set are set to run that program. We don't use wastewater funds to build parks or fund public safety initiatives, things like that. Those are, again, run just like a business would. Capital projects, money going into there pays for our capital improvement plan, pretty self-explanatory. And then our internal service funds, we won't spend much time at all on those. Those are just kind of funds trading money, more of an internal accounting. So I use that equipment one as an example. All your different operations will transfer money into the equipment fund, and that's what pays for vehicle replacements and maintenance and things of that nature. Okay, I want to start with the current year we're in, the fiscal year 24 budget review. It's helpful just to kind of take stock of where we were this time last year and what's happened since then. We were experiencing our second straight year of declining taxable value in the community. We'll get into this a little bit more, but while we've had good growth in the community, we've had property tax reform and other factors actually lead to a negative tax-based growth. Last year, we saw multi-residential properties, your apartments, become fully phased in, and those are now considered residential properties, just like a single-family home. We continue to see declining commercial and industrial backfill payments from the state. We ended a streak of 11 straight years of lowering our tax rate. Some of these pressures just made it to where we had to stabilize that rate. That wasn't completely unexpected. We knew that we were kind of leveling out as we were entering that year. We made some adjustments to several utility rates, mostly to help cope with some of the inflationary pressures being experienced. And we had a pretty aggressive add of 11 and 1/2 full-time employees, almost six of those in the general fund, a handful to enterprise funds, and then two of those were funded externally. We had one funded through the Housing Authority, through federal housing dollars, and one through the Animal Center Foundation, as well, a volunteer coordinator position. We demonstrated great progress towards the strategic plan, and then we just kind of, again, raised some red flags with some of the taxable valuation growth and really what that means for future years. While it wasn't anticipated during the budget approval, in August of this year, we did do a drawdown of reserves, about 4.5, 5 million, to purchase the 21 South Lynn property. So just acknowledging that we made that decision early in this fiscal year to drawdown some of our reserves there. Okay, we're going to go through each of these five topics, one by one. These are some of the headwinds that we continue to face in putting together this budget. The State of Iowa Commercial Industrial Backfill. So this dates all the way back to 2013 tax reform. The state lowered the taxability of commercial and industrial properties from being 100% taxable to 90% taxable. They told cities not to worry because they were going to make up the difference, and they lived up to that promise for a period of time. But back in 2021, they decided it was long enough that they lived up to that promise, and they started to phase out those backfill payments. So the graph on the right just shows you that we're in this declining payment period. In fiscal year 25, we'll take in about 600,000 from the state for this backfill, not even half of what it was at its peak. Next year, we expect to be just over 300,000. And then in fiscal year 27, we will no longer get any assistance from the state from those tax changes. Residential rollback. A lot of attention on this last year. You may recall that the state legislature changed the rollback. It was originally going to be 56%. That's what it was originally published at, but they lowered it to 54. So we had two straight years of 54%. This is the rate in which residential properties pay. So if you have a million-dollar residential property, this current year, you pay taxes on 54% of that value, or $540,000. That's what our tax rate would go into. That's how much the property would pay. You can see that for fiscal year 23, we have a steep decline. We're going from 54% to 46%. And again, this is a state-issued number. This is not something the city controls. This is the largest drop in a single year since 1979, largely driven by assessments growth. So I think last year, a lot of assessment mailings went out. We were hearing assessments going up 15%, 20%, 25%. That's a major factor in this rollback figure. This is a statewide figure. It's not unique to Iowa City or Johnson County, but it is significant. The green text above tells you that for every 1% change, it's about 1.1 million in tax revenue to the city. So 8% drop, over $8 million impact to the city. This will probably be the last year for this slide, but it's important that we now have our multi-residential property as being residential. So this shows that all the way back in fiscal year 14, just like commercial properties, your multi-residential properties were taxed at 100% of their value. If you owned a million-dollar apartment building, you paid taxes on a million dollars. Well, the state with that 2013 law dropped that taxability down to the residential. So at the bottom there, you can see the current year we're in, they're paying taxes on 54.65% of that value, and then next year, it'll be 46.34% of that value. A couple of things to point out. We estimate the cumulative loss in revenue, this isn't tax-based, but in actual revenue to the city over this phase-in period, was about $20 million. And now, that last bullet, we have 81% of our total assessed valuation subject to this residential rollback. So it just goes to show how much volatility we need to be able to brace for year over year. As this thing moves up or down, 81% of our assessed value is going to be moving with that. The diversification of tax base, when you think of commercial-industrial, becomes even more important, right? I think we've seen over the last 5, 10 years, more and more of our tax base is dependent on multifamily and residential. This really underscores the need to continue to look for those opportunities to build our commercial and industrial tax base. We like to look at building permit trends as kind of a lead indicator in taxability. So this gives you about a decade's worth of history here. You can see that in that 2017 to 2019 range, we were at that a little over 213 million in building permit value, and then a sharp decline with the pandemic. And when we talk about a negative growth in tax base, that's really because the 2020 and 2021 years, we weren't growing much, and there wasn't just a whole lot of economic activity happening in the country. But locally, we felt that, too, and that translated to depressed taxable valuation. I'm happy to report in 2023, we bounced back in a good, strong way. We had over 275 million in building permits, so we should see the impact of that in a couple of years as those properties are built and hit the tax rolls. I should also note, we had about 40 million of our 2023 value as public sector. In other words, that won't be taxable. So if you back that out, we're just over 200 million, and a large portion of that was two properties. We have a large student housing property that was permitted on Myrtle and Riverside, and a large senior housing that was permitted around Hickory Hill Park, the Featherstone Senior Living. Those two projects account for over $100 million of that value. So again, properties that will be subject to the volatility of that residential rollback. Okay, this is a busy slide here, but I want to first start with the red bars. This is, you can think of as the tax base. This is the taxable value in the community. And you can see kind of good, steady growth from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year about '21, and then some plateauing after that. I like to look at this in two-year increments, and that's what the red numbers at the bottom tell you. And you can see, as we go from left to right, we have 8.96% growth over two years, 9.27%. So that's telling you, on average, we're about 4.5% growth per year, which was able to kind of allow us to muscle through some of the 2013 property tax law. We had a great two-year period in fiscal year '20 and '21, where we were closer to 6.5% growth each year averaged out. And then unfortunately, you saw some of that pandemic impact in fiscal year '22, and we're continuing to experience the impacts of that through fiscal year '25. So when you see 2.78% growth over two years, followed by 3.25%, really, we're looking at a four-year period in which our tax base is growing, on average, 1.5%. I think we can all appreciate that that's not going to be enough to sustain the current operations when we're as dependent on property taxes as we are here in the state of Iowa to fund local governments. So we continue to try to work hard to make sure that those taxable numbers get back up to that 4.5, 5% range that we were at pre-pandemic, but for now, we're still falling short of that goal. A little bit more about the property tax reform. We talked about the 2013 reform. That's now fully phased in. The commercial and industrial backfill payments, we talked about those. Those will be out by fiscal year '27. And then in 2021, there's actually a new backfill that was created. This is the Business Property Tax Credit Backfill. The Legislative Services Agency, when that legislation was passed, projected that by fiscal year '29, '30, the state would no longer have money to pay cities back for this property tax credit backfill. So this isn't actively being phased out, but we do expect that the state will eventually stop making payments or be forced to phase those payments out. The 2023 legislation saw a new military and senior homestead exemption. We're seeing that for the first time. It's basically a property tax exemption that qualifying households can add to their homestead. And we see in this first year, the impact for Iowa City is about a loss of 13 to 14 million dollars in taxable valuation. So certainly impacted by that. And then we're going to talk a little bit more, Redman's going to talk more in a little bit here, about the loss of the library and the emergency levy, but those were eliminated by the state, and those produced just shy of $2 million for us annually. Obviously, the library levy was used to support their operations, and the emergency levy the city had used to support our climate action programming. Those two levies are added to the general levy, and we'll get into that again, but then that general levy is ratcheted back down, and we'll be fully, those levies will be fully gone by fiscal year '29, probably '28, it just depends on our growth rate, but my guess is it'll be out by 2028. So you can see in this first year, we'll lose 36% of the value of that levy. That's why I think it'll probably be out this year. The more you grow, the quicker that ratcheting back of that levy loss is. We'll have some specific numbers for you to look at in a couple slides. So we have to absorb this into the general fund. Unless we collectively decide that there's services in the general fund that we want to reduce, we have to make room for these, which is difficult when you're in a period of stagnant taxability growth. And on top of that, we continue to see volatile variable costs, so unfortunately, we can't control all the expenditures that we'd like to. And we have things like health insurance, and I pointed out property and liability insurance in this slide. Sometimes those show volatility. We've seen that with fuel prices. We all experience that with fuel prices from time to time, where those will jump up, but I thought I'd highlight these. So our property insurance increased 25% in the current year, and we're projecting another 35% in fiscal year '25. Property insurance across the country is getting more difficult and more expensive, but municipal governments are certainly experiencing this, too. Our liability insurance, we're projecting 21% increase in fiscal year '25. So when you combine these, it's about $850,000 in new expenditures for the general fund over these two years. So those are just things that we have to absorb. Obviously, we try to limit these, but we're going to have to absorb them, and that's at the sacrifice of some of the inputs to the services that we delivered. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Redman, who's going to walk you through the revenue section.
All right, good morning, Council.
Good morning.
So every year, this is going to be new for our new folks, but I try to put this in the right mind frame, and I always come in with a little story about my former graduate school finance professor, Mr. Moody's. No connection to Moody's rating credit system, but last year, we talked a little bit about the goose and the golden egg. I'm not going to bore you with that one. Everyone knows that. This time, I'm going to reflect on a story about Prosperia, fictional community that he would also use to talk about some of the challenges that goes into municipal financing. And so in this story, Prosperia is running into some financial crisis, and they are real short on options. So they start kind of looking at creative financing tools, and one of the things that they came up with was some private placement bonds and some community bonds, where the community can actually buy bonds in their community, a little bit like Green Bay did with their football stadium there. And so anyway, the story goes that it's a hit. Everybody's invested in the outcomes of the city, and they're invested not only by taking in it, but financially investing in the community, and it's the rave. Other cities are looking at it and starting to adopt it, and what was a unique thing that drove a lot of people to Prosperia winds up becoming kind of a status quo, and revenues start to drop. The magic of the short-term creative financing kind of goes away, and go figure, the original situation that placed the city in crisis is back, but now it's even worse because they never really addressed those issues and basically lived off the short-term benefits of that creative financing. So his stories always end up bad, so I think about that, but I just want to kind of lay that kind of mind frame there as I kind of go through these revenues so that we kind of keep in mind that our challenges, we need to look at the foundations of those challenges and maybe not just get focused on maybe some short-term solutions. So soon as I hit it, it goes dark. Okay. All right, picking up with revenues. So we'll start with this slide, which shows all fund revenue sources. This is primarily, want to take a look at the property tax slice of the pie, it's 31%. Changes for services, that's our enterprise funds, that's at 22%. Our intergovernmental funds usually aren't this large, but a big chunk of that is our ARPA funds. Also includes 28E agreements. All right, our next slide focuses on just the general fund. The big takeaway here is the visual effect of how much the general fund relies on property tax, and that's at 67%. Some of the other pieces of the pies would be other city taxes, hotel motel and utility franchise taxes, that's around 5%. Intergovernmental grants, 28E, we talked about that, 7%. Miscellaneous fines, fees, chargebacks to enterprise funds, et cetera. That's around 12%. 2% change for services, inspections, cemetery programming, and a small portion is the financial sources, that's 1%. Those are like sales of assets and loan repayments. So we kind of talked a little bit about some of the impact on our levies. As shown in the previous slide, how important property taxes are to our general fund, this really highlights the impact of what House File 718 had on the property tax reform that was passed last session. For Iowa City, that resulted in library and emergency levies being discontinued and consolidated into our general fund levy. That moved our 810 general fund levy, which is based on per thousand tax rate, to 8.57 with that consolidation. So that sounds good, except the state also imposes a growth rate in taxable property value that, well, they impose a penalty on communities that have growth rates that go over 3%. That affected us, and that penalty reduces our tax rate by 17%. So that 8.57 of that consolidation is reduced by 17 cents, and that takes it down to 18, excuse me, 8.4 per thousand of tax accessible value. So to help try and close that gap, there's a couple of things that we've looked at to kind of ease some of those pressures. So one is our increase in our TORT levy and an increase in our debt service levy. So you can see those there to make up that gap of that 17 cents that we lost.
Can I jump in real quick on that backslide? This one's really important, and it's probably going to take you a little bit just to stare at this and really think through it, so we'll pause on it for a minute. But what's happening is that library and emergency levy is getting squished into the general fund, right? But then the general fund levy has to come down, so it's not like it's just added to. And we have to free up flexibility in the general fund. So what Redman's pointing at is we're increasing a couple other levies that the general fund historically has supported so that the general fund can back off that support a little bit and then take on the library and the climate action. So the general fund could pay for the increase in insurance cost, but we're better off putting that on the TORT levy and absorbing, again, the library and emergency fund and the general. Same thing on the debt service. We typically will transfer money from the general fund to the capital fund, and we do pay-as-you-go capital projects in addition to borrowing. We just can't do that as much right now, not in the short term at least. We hope to be able to get back to that. So we're going to be doing less pay-as-you- be able to get back to that. So we're going to be doing less pay-as-you-go and more borrowing, and you're going to need to increase your debt service levy to pay for that. So that's what's going on here. But this is going to take a little bit for the tactics here to sink in.
Can I hop in? Redmond, you spoke about if there's growth above 3%, cities get penalized?
Yeah, they'll call it reduction, but it's a penalty. Yeah, so counterintuitively, the way that they have looked at cities that are growing, in their minds, they believe that that growth is not being shared with the taxpayer. So their thought is that they would increase and basically increase their ability to reduce that growth and force some type of tax relief. But it doesn't make sense for a community like Iowa City because we've been on an aggressive tax relief plan for the last 11 years anyway. So for us, it essentially is a penalizing us for being successful and having a growing community.
Yeah, that's how it sounded to me, too. Thank you.
This slide here doesn't show all of our levies. Are there other levies where we still have any capacity? I mean, I trust that we're shifting things around as best we can, but just in thinking about places where we could actually collect additional real estate taxes, are there other levies that could be used, like for specific projects or things?
Yeah, Nicole and Angie may have a list that they can rattle off, but there are other levies available to the city. Some of them probably were taken away in the same legislation, but like, there's a capital improvements levy that requires voter approval. I believe, is there an airport? I think there might be some type of municipal airport levy. I'm not sure. Any other ones come to mind that we've?
Not that come to mind. And we do have a little bit of room on our employee benefits levy, but.
Will you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
We're running out of options to even be able to increase anywhere, right? At some point, if they keep dropping it, we're not going to have the ability to even keep our rate where it is.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Is there any, sorry, follow-up question on that? Is there any suspicion that additional levies will be removed through state legislation?
I mean, I think they're, not at this point, but there's already a bill, right, to reduce the commercial and industrial assessment. So I mean, I think they're coming after property taxes again. What that's going to look like, we don't know.
Quick question about the growth penalty. Could you kind of explain the relationship between that penalty and our desired growth rate, right? So are we shooting for a growth rate, and this is just like an objective question, are we shooting for a growth rate that's going to incur us like more of these penalties? Because that's what it seems like.
And I should say, I have characterized as penalties, they will call it a reduction.
I don't care what they.
So based on the rate of growth, you fall in these various tiers of reduction. The whole idea is to ratchet back that consolidated debt, excuse me, the consolidated levies. So for us, it's the library and emergency. For other cities, there could be some other levies that have been consolidated. And what they want to do is get us back to the 810. So over a four-year, five-year period, there's continued reductions. And based on your growth, you can be reduced quicker than others. If you're a slow-growing community or not-growing community, that reduction is at a lesser rate.
Yeah, it's hard because there's not really a target. I could tell you, if we would have grown 2.9%, then we wouldn't have been penalized at all. So that's the magic number is 2.99. But regardless of, you know, this really just dictates how you're phased down over that four-year period. At the end of the four years, we're all going to be back at 810 anyway. My guess is we'll hit the 3% growth targets every year, and we'll probably see this phase out occur in three years instead of four. That's probably where we're going.
Great. So moving forward, this slide, our property tax rate trend, kind of highlights what we were kind of talking before. The red bar is our taxable valuation, or blue is our property tax rate, as you can see. And even if we went back beyond fiscal year 16, you'll see that blue line trend continuing to come down. It is notable around fiscal year 22 that it starts to plateau out, and that's really where a lot of the states, 2013 tax reforms, the backfill is run its course, and now the new tax reform is run its course. So I mean, theoretically, that blue line would continue to be going down if it wasn't for our big brother state agency trying to get involved in guiding us on tax, with the tax reform legislations. So it's actually kind of counterproductive in some of the things that they're doing. But just the same, our evaluations have been on a scale going up. And with fiscal year 25, it's a better year, as you can see. But I don't want to kind of say that's a turnaround year, but it is coming out of COVID, and it looks a little bit better, so.
I have a question about the taxable valuation on that slide. We'd mentioned on the building permit slide that a lot of the value indicated in that increase was, or a good chunk of it, was public and therefore wouldn't actually be assessed. Did these value, is this just sort of like the built value, or is this already backing out? Is this like the actual amount on which tax is levied versus the 100% value? Do you know?
This is the taxable value, not the 100%.
Got it. Thank you.
So for example, in fiscal year 25, you can see that taxable growth of 3.61%. Our total assessed growth was 18%.
Yeah, okay.
So we saw great value grow, but only 3.6 taxable.
Thank you.
So looking at this slide reminds us that Iowa City is just one levy or one component in the overall total property tax rate that property owners pay. The city, at its highest point, was at 43.5% overlapping, but with a lot of those efforts that we've been talking about, getting our tax rate down, we're now got it down to where we're 39%, which is below the school district, which is at 41%. So just kind of reminder that although we seem to draw a lot of attention with the public eye, that there's other governmental agencies that are involved in their tax rates. This slide looks at, again, our efforts in reducing our tax rate, and we'll see that since 2012, our tax rate has dropped below the city of Davenport, below the city of Des Moines and Cedar Rapids, and as of very last fiscal year, even Sioux City. So we're doing really good at our 16.3. I mean, obviously, we would love to do better, but we're also facing headwinds, just like the other communities are with a lot of the tax reforms that have been coming down. This slide takes a look at our hotel motel tax. Remember, overall, this is a relatively small percentage of our general fund. If you recall, to our earlier general fund pie chart, hotel motel would fall at that 5% in other city taxes portion of our general fund revenues. But we like to look at this one because it gives us some indication of visitors to our community and some of the effects of our economic development efforts. I think some years to kind of keep an eye or take a look at that would explain some of the peaks and valleys is in fiscal year 2018. We had the Graduate Hotel going through renovations. In 2020 to 2021, we know that was the COVID-19, so that shows a big dip there. And 2022 and 2023 shows a resurgence. So my mom used to always tell me that a setback is a setup for a comeback. Well, it looks like our hotels are making a comeback after Our next slide looks at our major revenue sources, our utility franchise. Utility franchise is our tax on gas and electric utility bills. We only show our actuals because our budget is really conservative. So any fluctuations in our energy usage or weather-related, for cool summers, warm winters, will kind of be evened out from those impacts. So we're at a 1%. Iowa City utility franchises currently at that point. The state allows us to go up to 5% with city council approval. So this is on the left there, or the right, I should say, you'll see where some of the other communities line up there. I think one of note is, just recently, North Liberty had moved from 1% to 3%. Later in the presentation, we'll kind of explore how this revenue source could play a role in finding ways to potentially help us with some of our funding for our fare-free transit, once the pilot program is concluded. So just kind of keep this in mind as well.
Redmond, is there, I know this offhand, but is there a capacity for us to have franchise fees different for electric versus gas, something that might align with climate action goals?
I don't know of breaking those up.
That's something we'd have to look at. I'm not aware of cities doing that, but we could check into that.
Would like to know that.
So, yep. So our next slide looks at our road use tax. This revenue stream is heavily restricted for road-related expenditures. The takeaway here that we want to leave you with is that we're facing some major challenges in keeping pace with our road maintenance demands. So looking at this graph, the blue lines represent our revenues, where the red up and down is the change rate. But I think behind this slide is really the cost of construction is going up. We had a pavement management plan done in 2020 or 2021, and the plan called for an estimated additional $11 million per year in road investments. And so if you look at fiscal year 2011 and the growth that happened from there to fiscal year 2023, that only represents around $3 million, $3.3 million of growth in the road use tax. So if our plan is calling for investments of $11 million, you can see how far we are and what that gap is. To kind of give you some idea, the plan also identified our whole road network value at around $610 million, and also recognized about 63.9% of our total road condition as in good condition. But that leaves us with 36% of condition that is either fair, ranging to very poor. So there is certainly a challenge that we have in front of us, and of course, there's some headwinds that we have to work through. So this slide will kind of talk a little bit about those headwinds. But first, we do realize that road use tax is not keeping pace. We clearly understand that. But then the construction expenses is really shown here. This is done by Department of Transportation, and can't really see, but you could see in 2015, 2016, there's a huge increase of costs there. And so that's before COVID and pandemic, those costs were going up, and it was just exaggerated during the pandemic. And so that cost is also raising the dollar amount that we need to reinvest in our roads because it's going to be costing us more. The other challenge is every year that we delay, that also is a compounding effect, not only with the construction costs, but then the road condition gets worse. And as road conditions get poorer, they're more expensive to get back up to the standard. So that's a constant challenge, headwind that we're dealing with.
Did you say that it was the overarching kind of report card on our roads was that 36% were fair to poor?
Yes. Yes. And I will say, I think we're going to be commissioning a new pavement study soon to update to 2021. But that's pretty much where we were at that point in that snapshot in time.
How often do we do that? I think we just did it in 2019.
Yeah, the state will collect the pavement data every couple of years. The 2020 study was the first time that we really hired someone to analyze it and help us prioritize and project out future needs. So later this year, we'll have an update to that, and we'll probably do those updates every three to four years, just so we can make sure that we're aware of whether we're keeping up or not.
Do we know how we are in comparison to other similar?
Yeah, the report gets into that. We're actually fare very well compared to our peers. I think particularly when you look at the older cities, right, it's hard to compare ourselves to the Ankenys and West Des Moines of the world that are new, mostly new infrastructure. But I believe only Waterloo maybe was ahead of us in terms of the larger cities, and they use a lost-for-100 roads. You'll see that in the next slides. And that's one of the biggest kind of challenges that we have. When you look at the next lost slide, you will see that most of the older, larger cities use a portion of their lost-for roads, and we just don't have that revenue source.
And this is annual trends that we're looking at right now. Is there any evidence that what we're doing in Iowa City is smarter or better? I mean, I know that there's an increased cost in labor and materials, obviously is forcing this, but it's size of roads, quality of roads, amount of infrastructure that gets replaced, also something that we control.
I mean, this is just a benchmark, and it's not to say our experience hasn't been exactly the same, but through the bids that you all approve, we've seen those projects just in the last few years jumped 20% to 30% pretty routinely. So I don't think we're too far off from these DOT experiences.
So I think the other point I'd like to leave you with is that with all those challenges, obviously, we've been relying on our geo-debt to fund our road projects. That places additional pressures on tax, property tax revenues, which overall can affect the availability of funds for quality-of-life investments.
Is that general obligation debt in terms of property taxes all captured in the debt service levy? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
So our next slide here, local option sales tax. Obviously, we were kind of building you up to what a possible solution could be. If an additional $11 million is needed, If an additional 11 million is needed, and keep in mind, that number could be higher now because that was ascertained in 2021. But going off that number over the next 15-year period, if we wanted to just have, you know, our status quo kind of conditions, it would take that type of investment. If we estimate a loss in that, we'd generate roughly anywhere from eight to 12 million dollars per year and with a projected growth of about 1.3% annually. So this is just showing some examples of how loss is being used in other communities. You can see that many of them are using street repair as a part of it. And we talked about Waterloo and Cedar Rapids also at using 100% of their loss for street repair.
I see some of the older effective years show 100% streets and sewers. Does the state allow us to do that? Or are we required now to do property tax reform with 50%?
They have been there to use 50% for property tax relief. There's been some creative ways that have been used to get around that that hasn't been upset yet. So give us, you know, give us time. I'm sure they'll figure out a way. But the rule of thumb is that 50% would be go for tax, property tax relief.
We've looked a few times at that 2013 number that averaged the 8.8 million last time we had loss. What's our best guess for what it would be now?
Well, even though the cities can vote on these individually now, which is different than 2013, different than in the past, there's still a revenue sharing model in place for contiguous cities, so it really depends on who else jumps in. I don't think we've seen exceptional growth in our sales tax base since 2013. Like Redmond said, maybe a percent a year at best. So the estimate that Redmond gave of eight to 12 million is probably pretty good. I'd say hopefully closer to that 12 end of things. But if our contiguous cities also pass a loss, we could be up in that 18 to 20 million dollar range pretty quick. It just depends who's in and who's out.
Is that because Corahville has so much sales tax?
Yeah, so the revenue sharing for contiguous cities is based on population, largely based on population, right? So if, let's say, Corahville, North Liberty, and Iowa City all have a lost, all that money goes into one pot, and then there's a statewide formula that distributes it to those three cities, and it's largely based on population, which makes sense, right? Because businesses don't pay sales tax. People pay sales tax. So yes, if Corahville comes in, they have a large number of businesses collecting that tax. The revenue pie is going to grow, but they also have a relatively small population compared to Iowa City, so they won't realize all of those collections in their community.
Thank you. When you say expired in 2013, how long before that we have the lost rate tax?
Four years.
Four years?
It was after the flood, so there were flood relief projects. We use that to expand our wastewater plant at the, in the south part of town and eventually create the Riverfront Crossings Park. And then the Gateway Project, Raising Dubuque, and the new Park Road Bridge were all supported by the lost.
You mean, when you say generated 8.8 million, that's before 2013, which is?
Correct.
Or now?
20, basically 2009 through 2013, we collected those funds for those projects.
And we've grown since then, right?
We've grown since then as a population, but our sales tax base hasn't necessarily grown proportionate to our population. Okay, I'm going to jump into the realm of expenditures here. This is just a quick graph to show you how much we're being, are spending in the different types of funds. Our general fund is a little over 71 million. Your enterprise funds, again, those operations that we run like a business, your utilities, your parking examples, about 64 million. The other large piece of that is the capital project side. That's where most of the expenditures take place. I'd like to share this slide, gives you a little bit more comparison with our cities. This is a general fund makeup. The Iowa State University puts these together every year to help cities kind of understand where they're at relative to peers. So we spend about 39% of our general fund on public safety. And I point out the culture and recreation section two are about 23%. On average, all Iowa cities spend 44% on public safety, so about 5% more than us. And 20% on culture and recreation are about 3% lower than us. However, that difference gets even greater when you just focus on cities of similar sizes. So cities of similar sizes to Iowa City spend roughly half their general fund on public safety. Again, we're at 39%. And they spend about 16% on culture and recreation. So you can kind of walk away from this is that we provide exceptionally high public safety services with fairly lean budgets. And we also invest a higher percentage of our general fund in culture and recreation than our peer communities. When we look at our general fund, it's really important to know that three quarters of every dollar go to personnel. We are a very labor-heavy operation. The services that we provide require people to deliver those, and the expenses around people generally are fixed, right? We are mostly unionized here, so we have collectively bargained wages. We offer health insurance, which have rate increases. We're part of state pension plans, which have rate increases annually. The discretionary portion of our budget, outside of how many staff we hire, largely is that 25%. The services, the contingency, the supplies, not much. When you hit hard times, that's generally why you see us and why this budget here, we're pumping the brakes on adding staff a little bit because there's just so much dependent on those. This is the same information, just with actual dollars. You can see from last year, we're recommending an increase in total expenditures of 4.5% in our general fund, which is almost exactly equal to that personnel expenses, those collectively bargained wages, those health insurance, those pensions, things like that. Everything else is a much smaller dollar amount and more status quo. Back to Redmond for the debt service.
For debt service, I think the thing that really wanted to come across is the fiscal discipline that the city has practiced has served as well. So just keep in mind that the state law limits debt service to be no more than 5% of the total assessed tax valuable, value of the city. And instead of using that state limit, 100% of that state limit, the city actually only uses 15.5% of its, of that limit for its general obligation bonds. Additionally, the city, by internal city policy, limits the ability of its debt service levy, ensuring that it doesn't exceed 30% of the city's total levy in any given fiscal year. Currently, we're at debt service at 16.5% of that. So again, showing very strong fiscal discipline on the city's part. And that's one of the reasons why we've been able to convince Moody's that we're deserving of a AAA bond rating. Moody's has, and many things that they look at, but one of the things that they look at is the overall debt burden that the communities that they rate. And they have goals of that not being more than 0.75%, 75% of the total assessed value. And we're right, right at that number at 0.78%. So, and that's actually getting a lot closer than we were just even last year. So we're making progress. And that as our debt obligations start to fall off, gets us closer to that number. So we're right there where we really need to be.
And these debt service numbers are all public debt service numbers. Is there any private debt service numbers included in that? I know we have neighbors that use private debt service to fund things.
No, we don't do any private placement bonds.
I have a question about how this capacity that we see reflected in, compared to the state limit and compared to our own policy. What does that represent in terms of where our debt service levy is? Like, is there an easy way to reflect that in terms of what that capacity that remains? Is it a dollar amount, or is it a more complicated formula?
Yeah, we really haven't gone through the exercise to see how high we could take that debt service levy. But there's also different debt strategies. You know, we try to retire all debt on most of the GOs that we issue are 10 years, and we try to front load some principal payments. You know, if we went to 20-year bonds and we looked at different payment structures, you could increase your debt capacity without impacting the rate as much. But you're going to pay more interest over time. So hard to quantify exactly, but we do have room to grow, and we could mitigate that through longer-term debt. I'm not recommending that, but that would be a possibility.
Just kind of pushing on, I think I said this last year as well, but we've been so very conservative in how we address borrowing and just, you know, thinking about the pressures that we're under. Does that push harder towards some change in this strategy or not?
Yeah, I think particularly if we come to a conclusion or it looks like loss just isn't going to be right for our community, we're going to have to look at increasing bonding for roads. We're already seeing that kind of take hold in our CIP. We'll get into that a little bit more, but that may become a necessity if we don't consider a source like local option in the future.
I think getting to some of that, Laura, is that if you remember last year, we were projected at around 0.92%. And we've been able to get that down to 0.78%. And we still had our AAA at that point, so there's room there, right? I mean, they don't like it. I mean, their benchmark goal is obviously 0.75%. But obviously, we were able to continue our, and have our AAA when we were a little bit further away from that goal. So there's room there. I mean, these are, these are just pieces. And I think what we talked about last year, too, is there's an aggregate of things that they look at. And so there's definitely, like Jeff said, there's rooms to push it and strike that balance. But we often take advice from our financial managers to know exactly where that could be and where we probably should stay away from.
And I think, I asked this last year as well, but there's not an easy way to quantify what the AAA bond rating is worth. But again, we treat it as sort of sacred here, and if it's not obviously saving us significant money, which is something to, you know, to keep in mind, to look at as well.
Well, as a segue, thank you. Looking at our Moody's bond rating, so I think the thing that I want to drive home here is, one, keep in mind that there's multiple rating agencies. Moody's handles many cities, but there's not, there's others. Standard and Poor's and Fitch make up what they call the big three. So there could be communities that use those bond agencies as well. But we use Moody's, and there's multiple cities in Iowa that uses Moody's as well. And we're in a really small group of communities nationally as well as in the state, which we'll look at in the next slide. But just kind of, you know, looking at, from a national standpoint, you know, we're one of 239 communities that at least worked through Moody's as their bond raider. And that's, you know, a very select group. But there's, there's other communities, and AA1 is also very good rating. And there's, you know, a number of communities there. A majority in AA2 communities you can see there. But then they get lower on various situations. So looking at Iowa, only one of three communities, us, Cedar Falls, and I believe that's going to be West Des Moines. So, you know, in a very unique situation, and hopefully that reflects the quality of life, because that is certainly one of the things that Moody's look at. And they look at the attributes of the community, things like household income, but also the investments that we make in the community. And so I think that bodes well, that we're doing something, doing something right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and just kind of reminding that we talked about the benefit of this. It's essentially the idea that we get a better percentage rate when we borrow. So it's, it's like not getting the credit cards they give college students, and they get 15% every three days or whatever it is. When I was a college student, it's getting, I mean, it saves us real money down the road.
Absolutely. Right. And it's just funny, your analogy, because I remember just happening, just to be able to get any kind of credit was great when I was a college student, right? And so you're willing to accept 21% interest or whatever. But then after a while, you get to realize that, you know what? 2% interest is pretty good. And so when you, when you're able to have, you know, high ratings like that, you get to call some of your own shots and dictate, so demand better interest rates. And so that actually makes a big difference in what you can do for the community. And, you know, in researching, because actually I worked, last year, Laura had raised the point of what, what does equates to a dollar amount and trying to get that. And I was really trying to find that answer this year, and I just, everywhere I went, I just couldn't. But I did see some examples where the city of Detroit, where they were, you know, if you recall, they had hit bankruptcy, the state had to come in and provide them a manager, required manager to manage their finances for a while. And so they were well, well down to the BAA3, and they've worked themselves up to a BAA1 now, and they're celebrating, celebrating that. And what they were able to do between the difference of the BAA3 and the BAA1, they were able to take savings and reinvest it into their pension program, which was what was killing them. So it makes a difference. Hard to say that it's $200,000, $300,000, but it does generate the ability for cities to reinvest in quality of life and other things that help them. So important. So other things, I wanted to, I just give you some idea of some of our regional counterparts. North Liberty, they have a AA3. Davenport, they're at a AA2. Tipton, AA1, A1. Waterloo, AA2. Muscatine, a AA2. Des Moines, a AA2. So just kind of give you an idea of where we are in those comparisons.
Okay, a lot going on on this slide. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time. You've got it for reference if needed. These are your enterprise funds. Really, what I tend to ask counselors to focus on is the two right columns. The far right is a fund health analysis. This is just our kind of analysis to you. The A funds, we just need to monitor closely. They're not, they're not in poor health, but they're certainly on slimmer margins when you look at the kind of reserves and what they're bringing in year over year. The double A's are obviously a little stronger. The AAA, we feel really good about, so we're in a pretty good spot with water. They have some expiring debt. We've got some good fund balance, and we're going to be in a really good position to address some of our community's future capital needs here in the next decade or two with that fund. So something just to circle back to if you need it.
On this rating system, is there anything lower than an A?
No. I will invent something if we get there, but hopefully we will never get there.
Got it, okay.
And this is just my own rating system here.
Thanks.
For utility rate changes proposed in this budget, we are proposing a 3% water rate increase, a 5% wastewater rate increase, and a dollar per month in the recycling rate. The total monthly fee increase for a household would be just shy of $4. The total monthly fee increase for a household would be just shy of $4. Most of this is to support operations as we continue to see service inputs go up with inflation. The wastewater is in part to support some future debt issuance. We are expecting to issue some revenue bonds in the next few years, and the additional rate will help pay back those debts. And then, on the recycling side, the third-party processing of our recycling materials is getting much more expensive very quickly. So, that extra dollar will go a long way to making some of those increased costs for handling the recyclables that we pick up.
Is recycling under refuse or landfill?
It's under refuse, yes. It's, from a management standpoint, it's under one.
I was mapping it to the enterprise balances.
Yep, refuse.
Okay. As well as parking and transit, I'm not sure I fully understand the lines between those two.
Yes, so parking is, there's a little bit of blurred lines between parking and transit. Think of transit just mostly as the bus operations. We do have one parking deck, the Cork Street Deck, whose revenues are required by the federal government to support transit, because it was built with the federal grant. Otherwise, the parking fees that we charge in the decks and we collect on the streets support the parking deck maintenance and the operation of those.
You're saying with this, you are proposing like increase in the water?
Yes, 3% water rate increase.
But we just did on the 2021, right?
We did on 2024. Last year, we increased it about 3% or 4%. I had it on a previous slide, I don't.
But why for the water?
Because, again, we run the water operation like a business, right? We don't support it with property taxes. We don't support it with utility taxes. And you have to continue to pay your staff, who have collectively bargained wages. You have to pay their health insurance, which is going up, and the cost of construction. When we're repairing water mains and we're fixing main breaks, those costs are going up 3%, 4%, 5%. So, you have to continue to bring in revenue.
I understand, but you know, is this done deal, or we're going to vote for it?
This is our proposal to you all. You're going to vote on it.
But, yeah, because I really think that we don't need to do that. This is going to affect a lot of low-income people. It's by like every year. If you, I thought we just done it on 2021, because I was here. But when you, last year, you did it, and you're going to do it this time, I think we need really to look into this and to figure out another, if we want to increase something, that is not increasing the water.
Two points. Number one, we keep saying run these like a business, but the really important distinction there is no profit margin.
Correct.
We cannot have a profit margin. So, we run them to breakeven.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, on the wastewater, how do we decide if we're going to increase rates to retire debt versus kick it? Like, we could subsidize through bonding and like debt service, right?
Yeah, you could use property taxes to pay back the debt. With wastewater, we could be looking at upwards of $30 million in improvements to the plant. On average, our GO bonding is about 10 to 12 million, so something of this magnitude. I think it makes a little bit more sense to put on a revenue bond. But yes, we could look at that from a property tax bonding standpoint. I think we're in a pretty good spot financially with wastewater. We're not carrying much debt now. The debt that we do have will be expiring in the next few years, so we can take the capacity that we were using to pay back old debt, keep that capacity, and support some reinvestment into the plant that's going to be, that's going to be needed in the next few years.
For the end user, is the wastewater amount tied to the water usage?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so this increase isn't, you can't like use less wastewater to reduce the increase? Okay.
No, it's based on water consumption.
So, just thinking about who's bearing those costs there. It's not an incentive for
Correct.
Conservation.
Correct. Certainly, on the water side, there's conservation.
Yes.
And that's one of the challenges the water fund will face, right? As just building materials improve, right? You think of low-flow faucets and showerheads, that's great, that those are great things, but they also constrain revenue in the face of rising expenses. Two other user fee charges that we're proposing with this budget, a $2.50 per ton tipping fee to support landfill operations, and also help support a new equipment building that is sorely needed out there, and potentially for us to look at future land acquisition as our community continues to grow. And then, one of the more significant recommendations from this budget is a parking rate increase. We haven't increased our parking rates in our decks and our meters since 2013. We are recommending that the parking decks move to $2 an hour, while we would maintain first hour free. We would also increase meters to $1.50 or $2, based on their location, and then adjust citations for expired meters, handicap space violations, and a host of other common violations that we see primarily in the downtown area. The combination of these, we would estimate, would bring in about $2.9 million. And you can see the breakdown of how we would anticipate to spend that, about 1.5. We hope we'll go to permanently support fare-free transit to the community. We would like to recommend about another million dollars per year to support parking deck maintenance. These are capital investments in our deck. As we look at projected capital needs, concrete repairs, and things of that nature, we currently are not generating enough revenue to meet those maintenance obligations coming up. And then, about $400,000 to support enhanced cleaning efforts downtown. We are seeing our third-party waste vendor downtown, their service level diminish. We're not effectively working with them to get to a level of service that we think is acceptable for this community. So, we've been working with the Iowa City Downtown District to explore other maintenance options, and we feel like we're working towards a good solution, but it will cost more money to get more people downtown and in our decks to help keep the area clean.
Return to the question about the enterprise funds being separate, and how, I think everyone's excited about finding ways to continue fare-free transit, but parking and transportation being two different enterprise funds, how is this okay?
Yeah, so, we would be moving to, we'd be moving to a combined enterprise. So, we'd essentially be taking, there's a couple of different paths we can take, but as of right now, we're leaning towards a combined enterprise, of basically putting parking and transit into one enterprise fund.
Would you please go back to the water, the utility rate change? And when you say, like, when you put it on this kind of format, looks at $1.09 a cent per month, bare home, yeah, it feel like very good, it's really not a lot of money and everything, but what kind of bill we talking about? Like, how much is the bill itself you are comparing the $1 to? Because some people, they pay for their water from $50 to $180, like me. So, it depend on the use, and the more the people using the water, that will be higher. But when you calculate this, and you say $1.09 per water, $1.84, because all of them in one bill, and I know that you say 3.9, 3 per bill, but what we talking about? How much is that bill? When you get this?
Yeah, it's going to depend on consumption. If you live alone, your water rate is, your consumption's going to be lower. If you have a family of eight or nine people.
I understand that, that's not my question. My question, when you come with this amount, what, how much you was, like, getting this number from? Like, $100 bill, that's why we pay 3.9?
It'd be more of what we would consider an average residential bill. My guess is our water side of things is probably about $35 a month. I'm kind of
Yeah, that's average?
I'm guessing.
Yeah, because that's not right, you know? It feels like really good, but that's not true. That's what I, like
You may be thinking of your utility bill. You get a utility bill that has water, wastewater, refuses, stormwater, all on it. Water's one component of that bill. So, you may be thinking of what the total utility bill is that you receive from the city of Iowa City.
No, no. Yeah, but all of them, the total bill will consist like water, wastewater, and recycling, and everything, garbage, and everything in one bill, right?
Yes, we present that in one bill, one monthly bill.
And we are having this increase on that bill. Each section have like this increase. What I mean, like, the 1.9 for the water, you get that 3% of what? It is 1.9. I can't figure it out, but I have to calculate it. But if you can tell me, like, if we said 3% is 1.9, what, how much was the bill that you get 3%?
What I calculated, and I'll explain how I did this, and this is just off of the numbers that we have here. So, if we're assuming that every percent here is about 36 cents and some change, that times 100 would be the average rate, based on this calculation, is $36.33. Or water rate alone.
And by the way, our basic, if nobody use the water, is $30. That's why I don't want this example to be here, because that's not true example. This is what make me say, oh, that's not much, let us increase it. But that's not right. You know, if this, like, if you calculate it 36, whose water bill is 36? So, I just, I just want to point that out, so because it look good here on this slide, but that's not the reality.
We're happy to present it in any way you want. We're not trying to hide anything from you or the public. We'll present it in any way you want. If you want us to bring in sample bills and show you what that looks like, that's, we're happy to do that. What we're suggesting is that 3% revenue increase is needed to continue to support operations at the service level that we provide. If we don't, that's okay, but what you end up doing is you set yourself up for a larger increase down the road, right? So, if you don't do one this year, you don't do one next year, eventually, you may need a 10% increase. And that's where we've really been intentional of trying to avoid large spikes. Matter of fact, it's a line item in your strategic plan. Don't have large spikes in your, in our utilities. Make them manageable, make them smaller. So, that's really what we're trying to do at the end of the day.
I did actually see that happen in a city where I was working as a journalist in Galesburg. They had several years where they did no water rate increases. They had a similar sort of, I mean, it's a fund, actually, they were really proud of theirs, because it was like this super deep aquifer and best water in western Illinois, all that kind of good stuff. They went several years without one, and I remember being there and being at the meetings where they had to jump at 15% because they hadn't raised it in like, I don't know how many years. But it definitely, like, it did, they were like literally going to have to like shut down their plant, or jump at like a huge amount that everybody had to swallow all at once. So, whether or not this is the right rate or not, you know, we'll be looking at that and figuring that out, but I do know that is a concern that I had even before you'd mentioned that, Jeff, because I had seen that happen in other communities I've lived.
I think that's fine, Sean, but there is a low-income people here. Even if we want to increase the water, we have to look to subsidize those people, we have to do something about it. But you know, there is, we have businesses here, we have people who can't really afford to pay the water if they increase it. But the thing that maybe you don't know, there is many people in this community, they have all the time, they are constantly, they are late in their bill, they cannot afford it. If we increase it, it will be really high for them. So, I just want you to know that, what I really need, I will love for the people who have money to pay the water, that's fine. But let us talk about also putting consideration, there is some group of people in this community cannot pay for the water increase. That's why, while we're looking into this, we should figure out how we can subsidize the low-income people.
I did hear you mention that $30 was the basic.
36.
I'm sorry, $30 was the basic rate?
He's
No.
No. It's not $30, the basic rate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, no. I do wonder if there are some basic rates that we can look at, whereas everyone in the community is sharing this 3.93%, $3.93, or, I'm sorry, $3.93. But I think as we go along, we'll be able to have more conversation on this. But if it is, if it's shared by all, then that would be a small number.
Yes, because I guess like when the public sees, yes, say, oh, no problem, my bill will increase $3.93, but that's not right. Your bill will increase depend on your usage. And 3.93 is for the 36, as I'm calculating, 36-dollar bill, which is, if you don't use the water, the city will send your bill for $30.
I would recommend that we maybe move on. We've got a lot to cover today. We can certainly dive deep into utility rates, and we can present you different scenarios for different consumption levels, and we can also provide you comparisons with rates in other communities. Any information you want, we're happy to provide you.
Could you also include on that, you know, what utility rate discount programs we already offer, or are offered in the community?
Yes, we can do that. Okay.
Just a quick question on the parking. When was the last time that we raised those fees, do you know?
2013. We might have done a kind of more surgical citation increase between 2013 and now, but the decks and meter overhaul was lastly done in 2013.
I'd urge us to consider a higher increase. I mean, this may, you know, if we're not going to do it for 10 years, and I think with, especially if it's subsidizing fare-free, there's a pretty, you know, one-to-one for many people on that. And I, having a business downtown, lots of people complain about parking. It's not the fee, it's the availability. So, I think increasing the fee will also increase availability.
That's when correct people to ride the bus and not coming with their car.
Like to look at the estimated tax impact. We use $100,000 assessed valuation, just because it's easier to do the math in your mind. And we've added a scenario B, because assessments went up last year. So, if you look at fiscal year '24, that property tax bill for the city of Iowa City would have been $854, keeping the tax rate the same. If your assessed value did not change, you could see that would reduce your property tax bill by $130. And if you did experience a 20% growth in assessments last year, like many did, you'd actually pay about $15 more. So, this just goes to show you how, what we're trying to show you here is how all the variables kind of come together to make up a property tax bill. You have your assessed value, which changes every couple of years. You have the, what's actually taxable, which is set by the state, and you have the levy that the city chooses. And then, of course, you're also going to have to layer on what the school district and county and other taxing bodies choose to. I'm going to try to move through these fast. We like to just kind of show what that would look like when you combine all the utilities and property taxes. So much of this, I don't put a lot of emphasis on this slide, especially this year, because assessments were, went up so much last year. But we do track this over time, just to see how much additional cost we're asking of our utility bill and property taxpayers. So, I want to talk a little bit about strategic plan, and how this budget helps us move forward towards many of the goals and actions that you have specified in your strategic plan. First, it's a good moment just to pause on our ARPA funds. We do have to have all these funds obligated by the end of this year, with spend down in two more years. You can see, we've made really good progress. We last reported this to you at the end of December, so you have a memo you can go back to if you want to do a deeper dive, but really proud of how the council has prioritized those ARPA funds. We certainly did not take the easy path forward with ARPA, which could have been in just investing in infrastructure and things of that nature. We really looked at the needs of the community and have done our best to contribute to creative solutions to address those. So, very proud of that work.
What is the spend-down requirement?
All funds have to be obligated by the end of the calendar year, and the spend-down requirement is the end of '26. So, we look at our values. I'm going to try to go through this, the next several slides are very text-heavy, but I want to go through these fairly quickly. We're a little behind schedule. We continue the social justice racial equity grant program. We had increased that last in fiscal year '22. That remains at $100,000. You still have approximately, speaking round numbers here, $600,000 remain in the Black Lives Matter line item that was created in fiscal year 2020. Matter line item that was created in fiscal year 2020. That is to be invested at, at your future direction. Know that that capacity exists. We're excited to welcome a new human rights and engagement specialist position that the council added with the last budget. That's currently being recruited right now. We continue to participate and expand sponsorships for a, a number of important celebrations throughout the community, many listed there. And then we make annual accessibility improvements throughout the community, sidewalks, parks, things of that nature, even in our public buildings. So continue to work on those fronts too. Climate action, our intent is not to skip a beat, even though those climate action funds, our funding source, we're, we're losing due to that state property tax reform. It's going into the general fund and we hope we're not skipping a beat. So they're going to remain aggressive. Number of existing grant programs and programming that we're going to offer. And you've seen in recent weeks, some of the newer offerings that we have, including whole house electrification, electrification grants for landlords that commit to accept housing choice vouchers, which we're really excited about. Other major initiatives that we have outside of the climate action team, you're aware of the composting grant the public works department received to expand that. Keenly aware of the fare free transit and our efforts to extend that to a permanent basis. And we have a large solar installation project that's under design at the Iowa City Municipal Airport. Partnerships and engagements, hopefully you see this in just about everything that we do. We continue to try to find solutions with partners, whether governmental partners, nonprofit partners, private partners, a few at the bottom there that I like to highlight from this past year. We have a new winter shelter partnership where we've increased that funding $75,000 this year, and that'll continue to grow in exchange for the service commitments from the shelter house. We are collaborating very well with the county attorney's office on the community violence intervention program. And as we mentioned with the parking increase, we're looking at partnering with the Iowa City Downtown District on a new cleaning collaboration for our central business district. Neighborhood and housing, this is the first year in many years, we're recommending to increase the million dollars for the affordable housing fund, 3% recommendation, which was included in the last affordable housing action plan. I mentioned the winter, winter shelter funding increase as well. We're currently considering land acquisition options for a significant scale, permanent affordable housing project that we would lead utilizing both ARPA and riverfront crossing funding streams. Continue to aggressively spend our CDBG in home allocations and we partner with the Johnson County Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We'll continue to do that going forward. At your last council meeting, you heard an introduction to the comprehensive plan redo, which is on the, on the horizon for us, and our staff's very excited to delve into that to help us meet our affordable housing goals. You will get an updated annual report from NDS in a couple of months. That'll detail the exact number of units assisted and created through our affordable housing efforts. You can access the last year's annual report and see that information, but those are updated on an annual basis. From the mobility standpoint, you'll continue to see expanded electric vehicle parking in, in all of our parking ramps. You may have seen it if you park at the Chauncey Swan, just expanded here the last week or two. We've talked about fare free. And then from an annual standpoint, we continue to look at bus stop improvements, sidewalk infill and curb ramp improvements. We'll get into specific projects, but with any project we pursue, we look at a multimodal design lens and really focus on how to make that not only better for drivers, but for transit riders, bicyclists, pedestrians and more. Very excited about the Highway 6 trail extension project between Broadway and Fair Meadows. We'll begin that design in 20, in fiscal year 2025 and hope to construct that in '26. Remain aggressive on the bike master plan. You saw bike lanes this year go up on Benton Street as one example. The Rochester's another with the reconstruction on that project. Looking ahead to this year, Sunset will add bike lanes. And then we have a four to three lane conversion on South Gilbert Street from Stevens to Major road improvements coming up. This will hearken back to the previous road slides that Redmond walked you through. We have the Gilbert and Dubuque Street projects, which council has already approved for '24. Next year, we'll be looking at the Court Street reconstruction and North Gilbert Street reconstruction projects. And then you can see in the out years, and, and you know, these numbers are staggering. These are large ticket items. Some of them have external funding sources, but, but not all of them. So we continue to try to find those external funding sources when we can, whether that's state or federal funds. But the, the point is, is that the roads are increasingly taking up more of our bonding capacity and we're still not keeping up.
We talked about the specifics of these during capital improvements.
Yes, yeah, we can, we can dive into these. Now, these aren't the only road projects we do. We do annual resurfacing, our crews are out there patching, but these are, these are some of the bigger ticket highlight items. From an economic development standpoint, we continue to support the BIPOC Business Accelerator Program. We have funds that we can use to develop our own small business grants and technical assistance programs and also to support Better Together 2030 initiatives. We have ARPA funding agreements that we're working on to support placemaking in partnership with Bull Schmidt's, South of Six and Iowa City Downtown District. And you're very familiar with the, the ARPA program and, and how we're working on that front. I will note that we have flat funding year over year for Greater Iowa City, Inc., and all of our arts and culture partners that are listed there. This is the second year we've kept that funding flat, and each year those agencies have requested increases in their budgets. But due to some of the budget pressures, our recommendation has been to keep those level, those organizations flat. But we need to understand that they have rising costs too. And at some point, we need to decide whether we want to increase our annual support for those organizations.
Jeff, can I ask about the, the, it's, sorry, the, the 4 million ARPA grants for underestimated and investment in childcare? Is there, are there plans or is there money allocated to continue our support of the wage enhancement program beyond ARPA?
Of the what program?
Of the wage enhancement program beyond ARPA.
We don't have any funds budgeted for that, but our $750,000 commitment is over three years. So is 250,000 a year essentially. We'll see what the drawdown rate of that is, and then eventually I think we will be asked, just like private sector businesses are being asked. But there's nothing in this budget because the ARPA funds will take us through fiscal year probably '26.
Okay. Basically, I just wanted to put a pin in it to say that that is continuing interest to, to find sustainability for that.
Safety and wellbeing. We're continuing to increase our aid to agencies grant program. This is now going to be 770,000. This is the annual funding to support a variety of, of nonprofit agencies in the community. We've stuck to that council recommendation of 3%. The aid to agency pot has grown, has probably doubled or tripled in the last seven to eight years. So we continue to invest in, in that program. Continue to invest in the future funding for a new station five from the fire department. That's a, shows up in a contingency line item in the fire department budget. You'll hear from the police chief later about beginning to shift our mental health liaisons to a co-responder model in alignment with our preliminary police plan. We are recommending a new civilian crime and data analyst position to support the, the community violence intervention program, nonprofit capacity building, and our public transparency efforts. We'll get into that a little bit later today. We'd like to have council consider the expansion of the local license plate reader technology that the university recently installed and the, which is also growing across the state. Think that this can provide exceptional capacity for us on the investigative front and help with crime prevention and the location of missing and endangered persons. And we've got some good information, both locally and throughout the state, on, on how those are assisting other law enforcement agencies. We continue to move forward with the neighborhood centers of Johnson County and the free medical clinic on the grants that you provided them to build their own capacity and excited for the outcomes of those projects. And then your strategic plan also calls for continued investment in the senior center building. That project is starting this week. And we're already moving into expanded night and weekend programming as well. Lots of park projects going on. We've been exceptionally aggressive on the parks front in my mind, really since this plan was adopted in, in 2017. These are projects that are all underway or will be underway here soon, either from a construction or a design standpoint, and a good mix of different types of recreational amenities that will continue to enhance throughout the community. All right. From a resource standpoint, I want to talk about our facilities, equipment and, and technology. We did create the facilities reserve fund in 2019 to meet some growing needs in our community. At its peak, we were able to build that fund up to probably about 13 to 14 million. And now you're seeing some intentional drawdown of those funds to meet community needs. So how are we using those facility reserves that we banked over that four or five year period? The senior center maintenance pro- rehabilitation project, our new equipment maintenance building, which will be under design here soon, the city park pool project that's coming up, and then eventually another round of improvements at the senior center. We have fire stations three and five next on the list. We currently have insufficient funding for those in the facility reserve and are hoping over the next two or three years to, to build back up to where we would need to carry those out without bonding or referendum needs. So we'll, we'll, we'll continue to track that and, and see what is needed to stay on schedule there.
And Jeff, Fire Station Three, that's to rehab it or to, to renovate?
That could be a relocation.
Oh, that's right.
Or it could be a rehabilitation in, in place. Right now, we're planning on a relocation.
And it would go further east, is that correct?
Yeah. We'd have Station Three move further east and Station Five go south or vice versa, however you want to tag those. That's a '26, '27 project, so we're continuing to work on that, both on the operating and the capital side. So we're prepared for that.
Is the idea that both would happen at the same time?
We'd need both to happen at the same time, yes. Your next work session, we're going to be talking about the space needs study that's currently under contract, some more on that and, and on February 6th. Going to be asking you for some high level direction later this year on the space, how to solve the space needs in those three facilities. We've secured over $30 million in federal funding this past year to support transit and landfill compost projects. Couldn't be more proud of staff for, for going after those federal funds and being successful. In landfill and the wastewater enterprise funds, we're also supporting major facility enhancement projects. Council has asked for more data-driven or data-informed decision-making tools, so we are starting to build our internal capacity for that. Public Works is collaborating with a number of other departments on the build out of our asset management system. And we'll be proposing a new community survey, something we haven't done since probably 2016, 2017, to help give us some, some data that we can track every year, every two years so that you have a better idea of the sentiment of the community on a variety of different issues.
I know that I'm very chatty this morning on this slide, but what you're referring to is that community engagement survey as one piece of, of this larger effort?
Yeah, of one piece, right? You're going to, when we're building this kind of more robust data repository, some of that external feedback meets some of your infrastructure data, some of your service level data. But I feel like that, that public sentiment piece is, is really important.
Yeah.
And we're going to need to establish that. And I, I think that's really important that you not only do it one point in time, you, we've got to find a, a comfortable cadence for us to do that every couple of years so that we can see trends in the community.
I want to ask one more question on this slide. Looking ahead to people, we look at Fire Stations Three and Five. How many additional staff would be needed to, to staff renovated and new fire station?
Yeah. We'd probably look at a minimum of 12. But, but honestly, we'd kind of dig deeper into that as we, we get there, ask, you know, we'd have the chief look at exactly what is needed.
Is it the capital investments of 10 million, not the human resources investment?
That's just the capital side and it's estimated, kind of rough estimates of $5 million a station right now. The operating side is in the operating budget. So we're trying to, to budget roughly that $300,000 a year so that when the time comes, we have the budget capacity to hire those staff.
What, what does it typically cost to onboard a, a new firefighter?
Probably, I, I, I've been using 100,000 for the last several years. It might be a little higher now, 110, 120,000 dollars you can think about in annual expense from wages, insurance, pension, outfitting, training, all those sorts of things. Keep in mind with the station two, we also have to be thinking of fire trucks, apparatus, gear, all that kind of stuff.
But we already budgeted for the embolism as well and the section of the...
We are working towards that. It's a gradual, we've been doing a little bit every year and hope to be where we need to be by that '27 construction year.
One last question, and this is actually more about your facilities, is the equipment, like the trucks and whatnot. I know that there's such a backlog in term, or back ordering.
Yeah.
Is this, in thinking about what we want to do for '26, '27 and the new station, is now the time that we're having to budget for the equipment?
No, I think we're still a year or two away from that.
Oh, okay.
But, but you're correct that there is quite the, quite the backlog for ordering that equipment. So we'll have to take that into consideration, but we want to make sure that we have all the funding pieces in place before you're going to be ordering, you know, a couple million dollars in equipment.
Okay. So just, so that we know heads up, that's not something that we have to be looking for within this, okay.
From the people's standpoint, I won't go over the fiscal year '24 accomplishments, but I think we did cover some good ground in 2024. 2025, we only have two staff positions. You've already approved and allowed us to hire one. That's the senior facilities design and construction manager in Public Works. You allowed us to move forward on that early after we received that $23 million transit grant, as we definitely needed some additional staff assistance to carry out that project, along with the neighboring equipment building project that ideally will be built in tandem. And then the civilian crime and data analyst, I, I mentioned that before, and we'll have the chief talk a little bit more about that here in a little bit. And, and there's the 300,000 dedicated to contingency funding for future Fire Station Five staffing. On the financial side, we are trying to stabilize our enterprise funds that continue to be impacted by macroeconomic pressures, inflation, supply chain issues. And so you do see those utility rate increases that we'll be revisiting. You have allowed us to add a grant management specialist position. We hope to bring that person onboard in the next few months, and that'll go a long way to securing and managing even more external funding. Our emergency reserve remains flat at 5.4 million, and our facilities reserve balance is being drawn without any contributions planned in fiscal year '24 or '25. When we made the decision to buy 21 South Lynn, we knew that, that would probably restrict our ability to, to transfer more into that facilities reserve or the emergency reserve. And then fiscal year '25, with just some of the state reform pressures that we're seeing, I think it's probably unlikely that we'll see a transfer into either the emergency or the facilities reserve in the, in the coming fiscal year two. So hopeful to turn that back around and, and get back to the point where we can put a couple million dollars per year into those reserves, but as of now, that's not our current outlook.
Can you say what the current balance is? I mean, you mentioned that it's been drawn down, but...
Yeah, the emergency reserve is, is at that 5.4. That's been pretty steady. We will, we've only used that a couple of times for flood buyouts, when properties come available that we want to, we want to buy and remove from the floodway. The facilities reserve, I see Nicole flipping through her budget.
Sorry, and I know it's in there. Sorry, and I know it's in there, I just thought for all of us in the video gallery.
Yeah, I think we were at its peak, maybe $13 to $14 million, maybe a little higher, but...
So we're projecting it to be at about 5 and 1/2 after FY '25 because we're using a significant portion for the City Park Pool.
That's right. Thank you.
That last bullet is important, so we are drawing, we're in a period, we're coming out of a period when we really bolstered our reserves, and those reserves are now being used. That's why you have them. We're using them in a planned way. We bought some excess property that we're going to be able to control, and we're investing in facilities. But we just got to keep an eye on that general fund balance. We're projecting to be at 31% of our fund balance, and our policy says we should be between 25 and 35. So we got up around 40%, and we're drawing that down. But with some of the valuation concerns that I've expressed, and some of the reform concerns that we know are headed our way, we just have to be careful that we don't dip down too much further than where we're at right now.
I have a question for the slide before, please. For the, you said the position was previously filled by swearing officer, however vacant since the pandemic. Is this means, are we thinking to fill out that with none is swearing officer, or...
Correct. So Officer Dave Schmidt was the last one to hold that specialty position, and he had a unique kind of skill set that allowed him to really excel in that. We think that that position, there's probably a bigger applicant pool and a stronger applicant pool if we make that a civilian position, someone that's trained in data analytics, statistics. Those are the skills that we'd be looking at.
Good question on this slide as well. Can you kind of go into the thought process for the additional $300,000 dedicated to contingency funding for future Fire Station 5 staffing versus pulling someone on, getting them trained up, so that when that time comes, they can immediately meet the need?
Yeah. So we did that last year, so instead of the 300 contingency last year, we did $100,000 in contingency, and we hired two additional firefighters. You know, in a perfect world, we'd hire them all right now, and we'd have them there. But understand, when you're opening a new station, you're not going to put 12 new people at that station, right? You're going to, the new people will be spread across different stations. So I don't think it's much a service level impact as one might think. But for this year, what I look at is we're budgeting a $2 million deficit in the general fund. So $300,000 of that, yes, is this contingency, but if I know I'm going to budget that capacity and plan not to use it, I'm a lot more comfortable. I think if we were not budgeting a $2 million deficit in the general fund, then I might be more inclined to recommend something similar to what we did last year, which was let's hire a couple and get them trained up. So we'll continue to look at that, and certainly, you're free to change this strategy, but for now, I don't know that we're in the best financial position to keep adding operational expenses with what we're forecasting really between now and fiscal year '29 with those levy reductions. So not spending those dollars, I think is the wise move or the prudent move at this Okay, next year's budget, what should we expect, or what at least is your staff thinking about right now? It'll be the final year of that commercial industrial backfill payment, so we'll lose another $300,000 from the state, and then that last $300,000 will go away. We're going to continue to see a reduction in our general fund levy, so that's going to continue to put strains on all those constraints, on all those general fund operations. I think you're going to see minimal operational expenses added to the general fund between now and fiscal year '29. I just am not sure that we'll be able to get past an annual budget deficit with the state reform. We'll see how some of the community growth comes in, but it's hard to envision adding a lot of positions over the next few years in the general fund. You're going to see our GEO bond issuance go up. Next year, we have a large project with Court Street, and we're going to get into this a little bit on Wednesday, but your, our purchasing power on the capital side is definitely diminishing. So we're going to try to take the annual borrowing amount from where we've been historically, which is probably $9 to $12 million, and we're going to have to push that $13, $15, $16 million, and that's going to take some additional budget capacity. And again, that's really being driven by two things. One, not transferring as many general fund dollars into the capital program, and two, just the increased cost of these capital projects. We just can't stretch our money as far as we did three or four years ago. Right now, we're projecting a 1% utility tax proposal in fiscal year '26 as the final funding piece for fare-free transit. And then we expect that we'll continue to have modest public utility rate increases to keep up with some of those inflationary pressures in those operations. We'll be monitoring those reserve levels like we just talked about, and particularly that facility reserve balance. We're going to have to see how some of these major projects comes in and come in when they are bid out, and see where that leaves us with respect to future facility needs. Really, the bottom piece is critical. We really need to think about intentional efforts to expand our tax base. We want to support all of the programs, whether we're talking about city operations, we're talking about funding arts and culture institutions, nonprofit institutions. It all starts with driving that tax base up. And, you know, as we talked about early on, four years of an average 1.5% growth just isn't going to give us the flexibility we need to do all those things. So final thoughts as our last slide here. I think we're going to continue to move the community forward through investments that align with our strategic plan. We're going to continue to have a robust capital plan despite these pressures and headwinds. We are recognizing an increasing number of red flags, and we're trying to limit operational investments that could strain the organization in the coming years. That's the thing, we have to understand, all those operational commitments that we make today, they don't go away in a few years. So if the condition, the budgeting conditions continue to worsen, it's not easy to take those operational investments away. We're setting the stage for a sustainable revenue stream to support our fare-free transit, and I would argue that's one of the largest local public service enhancements that Iowa City's offered in decades. And we're going to be ushering in a period of a significant investment in public facilities. And as of right now, there's no associated tax increases and limited utility fee increases that will fund those projects. And we're looking at the Senior Center, equipment, transit, landfill, wastewater, all those projects right there. They're under design and moving forward. It's not to say they're our only facility needs, but we are entering a stretch in which we will be doing more on that public facility investment than we have in the previous several years. Okay, we went a little bit longer than planned, that's okay. I have a few notes that we wanted to revisit, utility rates and parking fees, things of that nature. You had a question on utility tax, Counselor Mo, and we'll get you that answer. At this point, any final comments, questions, or things to flag for follow-up at this point?
Like, if we want to add something, how we do, go about that, like, as a council, if we have like certain programs, certain values, certain things, because now, this is a staff-proposed kind of...
That's right.
And I don't know, with all this like deduction here and there from the tax levy and from the backfill and everything, it makes us really scared even to propose anything because I feel like there is no money kind of. And I don't want to put pressure on just like increasing taxes for water and taxes for people so we can do this.
Well, I would say that now is the opportunity for us to have conversations.
Yeah. I don't know when the best time we can do that.
That's really up to you all. You can take that time now, you can wait till the end of the day, you can schedule a work session after today to talk about any individual proposals counselors have.
I will say kind of what I'm doing is I'm putting together just like a list of action items that, you know, maybe if it'd be appropriate for the end of the day, we can kind of go over things and, you know, say, hey, do we want a work session on this, 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 or this?
Yeah.
Just to kind of, you know, save total staff time right now.
Because the sooner we tell you what we need, it's better, I think. Even to tell us, no, we don't have it or anything, we just need to do it early.
I couldn't agree more. Sooner the better.
Yes.
One, can I just, one thing that I'm curious about is, in this overview, it was, I mean, it's absolutely, understandably focused on the dollars and the projects specifically. One of my ongoing questions that I have actually, and I know that we made several hires within the city for staff previously, but I just want to kind of get a temperature-taking from perhaps the department heads about, and certainly you, Jeff, because I know that this is also one of your own goals, is about staff capacity, morale, engagement, and sort of how does that balance out with the budget and the projects that we have? Do you feel confident that staff can kind of handle the framework of what's being proposed?
Every department that comes up here today can articulate a need for additional staff. And I don't doubt it for a minute. If they could have additional staff, there's no doubt they would bring value to the community, to the operation. At the end of the day, it's a balancing act. And over the last decade, Iowa City has taken more of the growth that we have had, has been invested in, it's not completely, but more of the non-staff items, right? We've created an affordable housing fund, we've more than doubled aid-to-agency external grants, we've taken positions from part-time to full-time, we've raised the minimum wage, really before others were doing that. We've chosen to invest in those as opposed to adding additional staff people. I'm not second-guessing those by any means, but they're intentional decisions that we've made along the way. So our staff gets by, and we wouldn't put anything in here in the budget that we didn't think the staff could manage. But yes, staff feels burnout pressure, yes, staff feels overwhelmed at times, but we do our best to prioritize and move everything forward. So if you, you know, specifically want to ask department heads about, you know, their staffing levels and what would they do, you know, how would additional staff help them? I'm sure they would love to give you their perspective, but yeah, there's no doubt we could use it, but, you know, the life in government operations is that there's a scarcity of resources, so it's a balancing act.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thanks to Jeff and to Redmond for giving us this budget proposal overview.